I'm sorry. Well, good evening, everybody. We are, I believe we are live and I guess it's okay with that. We is a study session, so I guess it's okay that we get started. If that's a consensus of this council, we will move forward. Say that again? Okay.
Mayor Pro- uh Mayor Pro Tim Smothersen, for those that may want to see the beginning of the study session, and we had posted it for six o'clock.
Okay.
It might be better to start at at six.
Yes, sir. And I show we have but two minutes or so, is that right?
That's correct.
Good evening, everyone. It is six o'clock and I want to call to attention the notice of study session. Olive redevelopment, City Hall, fifth floor, sixty eight oh one Delmar Boulevard, University City, Missouri, six three one three oh. Uh Monday, June twenty fourth, twenty twenty four, six P M. Uh I'd like to call the meeting to order. We don't need to call the role. So what I'd like to know is, is there any changes to the agenda for this, for the meeting, uh the city council meeting? Any changes? No changes? Then I'll turn it over to Mr. Rose.
Mayor Pro Tim Smothersen, council members. In October of twenty twenty two, Costco opened at Olive and I one seventy, which represents one of the most significant developments to occur in University City in many years. In July of this year, Crescent Plumbing is scheduled to open its doors for business in University City at Olive and Vernon. These developments create bookends for the Olive Boulevard corridor that we believe will result in additional development opportunities. Tonight's presentation is to seek your input and direction on the next steps to take towards facilitating development on Olive. The focus for tonight's discussion is the underdeveloped parcel that is that house the former Seafood City business. And Deputy City Manager Brooke Smith will be presenting to you tonight. So I will turn things over to Ms. Smith.
Thank you. So as data staff is looking for direction on pursuing development along the Olive corridor. Um, one area that has been identified is the eight zero zero eight Olive Boulevard, formerly Seafood City. Um, what you see here is um a parcel map and then the zoning map showing that it is zoned as general is currently zoned as general commercial. The current owner of the parcel is Six Fortune LLC, um which was the landlord uh for the business Seafood City when it was there. And the land is about seventeen point three one acres. Another area that has been identified um as a development opportunity are the parcels that are owned by the city that are located at seven three zero one through seven three three nine Olive. Um, there are seven parcels there. Um, one parcel is zoned general commercial. The other six parcels are zone medium density residential. Um, I did update the presentation and your packet. It said that there were five parcels, but there are seven. And I did find the acreage for that. That's one point six five acres. And um this, this area was identified as a potential development opportunity because we already own the parcel or the parcels, and we have been getting uh inquiries about them. So the next steps for us would be if directed by the council to um prepare requests for proposal documents um and issue them. Um, any proposals received would be consistent with our economic development strategy that was adopted in two thousand and one and our comprehensive plan that was recently adopted as well. And so with that, I would take any questions you all may have.
Mayor Pro Tim Smothersen, I did want to add on to Deputy City Manager Brooke Smith's presentation. I am not recommending moving forward with the city-owned parcel at this time. As you know, uh we in prior years um released an RFP for that property and was not successful. Uh, we've had some inquiries uh regarding it, uh but I think that there may be other opportunities along that corridor uh that would perhaps facilitate development along the entire Olive uh corridor. Uh, it would be, they would be in better position. So I'm not recommending it at this time, although we would certainly take any direction that you have and proceed as directed.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Rose. Uh, Mr. Clay.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim Smothersen and Deputy C. Andrew Smith. Thank you for your presentation. Um. So a couple of questions. Um, one is related to timeline. I I certainly don't want to speak for my fellow council members, but I think um there's, there's broad acknowledgement that the seafood city site is, uh, to put it delicately, a mess. And and something needs to be done with it. Um, so again, I know I did not speak for my other colleagues, but I think um that uh redevelopment um is is something that there, there could be broad agreement on. So understanding that, uh, first question is um articulation of a timeline, assuming that you would get consensus from the council on Seafood City.
Um, if we were to be given that direction tonight, I think that uh staff will begin working on the RFP documents immediately. Um, again, we uh would have to make sure they're consistent with our economic development strategy and our comprehensive plan. So taking the time to uh review those, I have not looked at the economic development strategy in a while um due to other tasks, but I, I think we could move forward with that relatively quickly.
Second question is about um, the city manager alluded to um thinking comprehensively about Olive. Um, we have seen uh what I think by most measures would be fairly good success uh with the Costco development and those uh businesses that are adjacent and uh there, there may be some more exciting things coming. Um, when we think about east of there um and the development that has been alluded to in the past, we've seen it in, in previous economic development plans. Um, can you say a little bit about the thinking there?
Um, I'm not.
The thinking about development east um of Olive, east of of Woodson.
Um, I, that's not something that I've, I've had discussions about, so I wouldn't have anything to say on that right now.
Okay.
Um, and maybe the city manager would have some input.
Yes, sir. Mr. Rose.
Mayor Pro Tim Smothersen, Councilmember Clay, certainly uh we believe that development um will occur along the entire corridor uh of Olive Boulevard. It's just a question of the priorities uh that you as a body have and where you want staff to place our limited uh resources. And so that's the purpose for the study session tonight is to gain consensus on, is it uh Seafood City where you would like for us to start, or is it a different development uh that you would like for us to uh to uh, you know, start on? Uh, and uh, once putting the RFP together will take probably sixty, sixty days um to, because we'll be looking at a, at a prior draft. Uh, but when it, once it's released, you'll want to keep it out there for a reasonable period of time. Uh, so that interested developers will have the opportunity to submit uh submit what their uh proposals are. But I would not recommend releasing two RFPs at the same time. I think you, you will need to determine what is your, what's your priority and 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 proceed with that.
Mr. Clay, go ahead. Yes, sir.
Let me just follow up. Thank you for your indulgence, colleagues. So to, to that to that point of, of priorities, understanding that perhaps two simultaneously is maybe not the best approach, but the preparation for one can begin while the other is out there. Um, because I think we, we also have to be cognizant of the economic environment that, that we're in. Um, right now we have a high interest rate environment, but that is by many indications set to change at some point this year or early in, in the first quarter of, of twenty five. And so when that happens, it is likely that you will see a lot of interest in development in a more favorable interest rate environment. And so I, I would not want to be at the end of that enthusiasm, but rather at the beginning of it, because there we're not the only community that has potential projects um out there that would be looking for developers. And so I would want us to be well positioned, even if we don't necessarily, uh even if we don't have anything locked down, we're well positioned to be able to go to market when the time is right. And so what I would ask, be considered is understanding the situation with Seafood City, but also making sure that we're ready for other opportunities that will have an even greater catalytic effect, similar to what markets at Olive has had.
Mr. Hales.
Thank you. Um, regarding the parcels, um, there's, there's a carve out there, uh eighty eighty, I think, is the address. Is, is that a, I imagine it's a separate parcel, but is it a separate ownership from the rest of the seventeen acres? Right at the corner of eighty first.
So the, the boundaries represent the actual parcel. So that would be something separate and then separate ownership, yes.
Oh, it is. Okay.
Yes.
Okay, Mr. McMahon.
Thank you, uh Mayor Pro Tim Smothersen. Um, thank you, Brooke Smith, for the uh presentation as well. Um, do you envision that we have with the economic development plan and the comprehensive plan have, which had a lot of community engagement? We, and it's recent that we have enough of that to move forward with request for proposals um so that sometimes we get those proposals back and then later we hear from residents, that's not what I want there. Um, so are we confident that we've got that level of recent input so we can have a good feel of, of you know, what our, what our community may kind of be hoping to get?
I do uh believe that we've had enough input uh prior to the comprehensive plan. There was the visioning um process, and we also have the, the third ward revitalization task force that is doing community engagement and what, as well for the third ward. Um, I anticipate a final document from that process being available, um probably at the end of the summer or maybe August or so. So I think between the three uh plans that we have had over the last um three to five years, there has been significant input.
Mr. Fuller.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. This is actually a question for uh Mr. Mr. Rose. On the Seafood City property, can we start a, this process without ownership or what, what are the mechanics involved in taking over that property? Because they're, if I'm not mistaken, they're still sitting or we're still sitting on a rather extensive bill to clear that property out, right?
Mayor Pro Tim Smothersen, Councilmember Fuller, uh I'll let John respond to the legal uh uh question that you have, but in general, I, yes, you're not obligated to own the property before submitting a request for proposals. Uh, and I'll defer to John for additional comment or to correct me if I'm in error.
Uh, no, the city manager is, is correct. And uh the, this property uh is uh was, was subject to a, a blight study five years ago that um that has expired um as of a couple of weeks ago. So if council uh is interested in a, a new blight study uh for this particular uh property or, or the area, uh it may request one and, and assuming the property is, is deemed blighted, then the city would have authority to authorize eminent domain and acquire uh the property in that manner and then uh uh make it available uh pursuant to a uh redevelopment proposal by a private developer.
Mr. Teeman.
Honorable Mayor Pro Tim, my fellow councilman, I'd, I'd like to raise a topic that is tangential. So I hope people have, you know, that I'm, I'm not interfering with the flow of conversation concerning the economics of this per se. But I, as, as the former chair, uh co-chair of the Stormwater Task Force, I can't help but also inject into this conversation the fact that we were talking about seventeen acres of impermeable surface. And with the comprehensive plan that we've been talking about trying to deal with uh the flooding here and so on, I, I feel the need to, especially on a day like today, to prioritize the environment. And I don't propose any solutions to this. There are people that are far wiser than I am about this. Indeed, with the Stormwater uh now commission, we have people who are recognized regionally and nationally as experts in this field. But I do think it's something we need to think about. And I think that the council has tremendously been attentive to many other concerns that are just simply uh more immediate, and I understand that. But we have to begin a process of recognizing and prioritizing the fact that something needs to be done uh about this. Again, I am not a wise man. I don't offer solutions. I nonetheless think it must be said that, that the planet is burning. All you have to do is walk five blocks today and you're soaking wet with sweat. You know, I'm a historian. I'm thinking of Cato the Elder, who used to say, finish every speech by saying that Carthage is the enemy. I think we have to start thinking that uh about prioritizing the fact that doing nothing about the environment is the enemy. And that these things must at some point be addressed. I'm not saying that people are unsympathetic to this by any stretch of the imagination, nor am I ignorant to the fact that this has economic impacts that I for one, I'm not, I'm not a businessman. I don't understand it, but I do understand that something must be done about the environment and that we need to start prioritizing this. I thank you all for indulging me in this somewhat tangential thought.
Okay, thank you, John. And, and, and I do want to, I know that we don't have a lot of time. Well, we have fifteen minutes, so um, but one of the things that I do want to address, and, and I do appreciate the fact and understand that Seafood City Lot is, is important. That's seventeen acres and that's, that's a major um draw. It should be a major draw, but one of the things that I want to point out is that Seafood City Lots availability was just recent, is more recent then. And what I want to point out to is that this right here is the Economic Development Task Force summary right here that we did in twenty twenty. And what I want to uh address is that and make uh everyone aware of the fact that Market at Olive was only half of the development proposed at that time. Because we got, what we had, what you have to understand is that the area that we, we wanted to address, not only Market at Olive, but what we wanted to also address was the area just east of Market at Olive, which is eighty two hundred through eighty five hundred of Olive. And that was addressed in this Economic Development Task Force summary. And I know I have copies of this, if any of the council members want that, but one page, but what you have to understand is that that east area was addressed in this summary on three pages, because that's how important it was, and that was the direction that we wanted to take at the time when we put this summary together. And that is the next stage after Market at Olive was the east area just east of Market at Olive. And so, and specifically, even the shallow lots were addressed in this booklet, and we can actually look at that. So what, you know, again, as I'm saying, if we're talking about priorities, we've already got in place a plan of priorities, and that is that we have Market at Olive. The next step should have been or should be um the area east of Olive. Then one of the other things that I, I'd like to address is that we've been given an opportunity and direction by the uh developers at Market and Olive, because one of the things that they were going to put into that development was apartments. They were going to put apartments at, at Mayflower. That changed, and then they were going to put apartments where um whatever the big box was right there next to Costco, and they were going to put apartments there. But with the recent change, and I'm hoping that's successful uh in getting a big box to come back to that north side area, they're no longer doing apartments. And the reason why I say that's important, it should be important to this council is simply because what they're doing is bringing in people to support Market at Olive development. So we then need to or should take that direction and bring in, and we do have a proposal that I, I would, that I did uh send to Mr. Rose, and it's just a preliminary proposal. And that's why I think it's important to understand that it fits in with the process. It fits in with the prep, plan we have in place in that the next priority should be east of Market at Olive now. But I will tell my colleagues, trust me when I say I am willing to negotiate and I, because again, I think that that seventeen acres is absolutely important. And I'm not sure that we can settle this tonight. If there is any other discussion, I'm open to discussion, but I just wanted to point out is that there is a plan. And that plan has already been established in this twenty twenty summary. So that would be the next step, but I am absolutely willing to talk about what would be the priority because, and, and the last thing I'll say is this, and I'd like Mr. Rose to explain why this, we have lack of resources and can't issue to uh plan, to F RFPs, if you would, please.
Mayor Pro Tim Smothersen, I think that there are two issues to consider if you're looking at multiple locations along Olive Boulevard and you're going to release uh multiple requests for proposals. Uh, one is certainly just the uh, the resources available, uh trying to work with uh staff, trying to work with potential developers and spreading resources that we have. The other issue is ensuring that you don't place yourself where you're cannibalizing the market, where you may find a developer that if given opportunity, might be interested in in submitting proposals on multiple parcels, but because you are pursuing them all simultaneously, they don't have the financial ability or the resources themselves to submit multiple proposals. So I would say those are the things that you would need to consider. Certainly, if you uh direct it as a council staff to move forward with multiple parcels, uh I would simply come back to you and say, here are the resources that we need in order to be successful. Can we do it? Yes. But would additional resources be needed? Yes.
Okay, um. All right. If there be nothing else, anyone with any other comments here? No. Okay, then, yes, sir. Go ahead. I.
I just wanted to, before uh concluding the session, I wanted to be a certeness for us what the council's priority uh priority is. Uh, whether you want us to move forward with the Seafood City parcel or whether you want to discuss this issue further.
Mr. Clay.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Pro Tim Smothersen. Um, I know Councilmember Hales is close on my heels there, so um. I, I would say, yes, seafood, for my perspective, Seafood City is, is a priority. It's seventeen acres. We, we know the, the recent history there. Um, but I would encourage us to, if not two RFPs let at the same time, that we build the infrastructures to support an RFP for um the continuation of uh Markets at Olive and what, what that is to be. Again, I think we, we have an economic situation that is in the offing that could be very favorable to developers, and I, I don't think we want to miss that window. Um, as we know, those who are seasoned on this council, these things take a long time. And you, you've got to start the process early enough, because if you wait too long, then you will start to get into a less favorable economic cycle again. And so um I, I, I think we need to be if not necessarily again, letting two RFPs simultaneously, we need to be in preparation for both and, and the ability to be nimble when the time is right.
Mr. Hales.
Um, I would, I would concur. I think if I'm remembering right, we have a, a very substantial lien. Um, all of the buildings on that set, those seventeen acres uh have been condemned. They're in need of repair. Uh, my understanding is they're not getting repaired. Um, and so I, I'm, I would love to see a proposal. Um, doesn't mean we're going to like it uh or, or multiple proposals. I mean, the, the more, the better. Um, but I think that's an extremely viable, developable site that has been uh just a, a huge challenge and, and a problem property uh that's required tremendous resources for years and there's not, you know, for years, uh, we, we all drove by and there was some development coming soon, and the sign basically got to the point where it was old enough that it rotted and fell down.
Uh, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
So I'm in favor and I'm, I'm open to, to any um interest by developers to, to propose whatever, whatever they're, they're interested in proposing and go from there.
Mr. Fuller.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. I, I'm also in favor, and I think what Mr. Teeman brought up, I think we're killing a couple of birds at one stone here. So I, I say the sooner the better, move forward.
For Seafood City.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and Mr. McMahon.
All right. Oh, I'm sorry. Please.
Sorry. Um, yeah, I was, I, I'm in agreement with that, and I think we also have to recognize if there is a, if there is a plan or a proposal already in existence for property just east of the uh Markets at Olive already, that's much like a situation where we had uh, you know, the Avenir Apartments where the developer was acquiring over a period of time, properties, assembling them, putting together a package and saying, here's what I'd like to do. So I think what you can still analyze that proposal that uh whoever it is, is it's developing it and, 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 and talk with them. That can still go on while we're throwing out a, a net for Seafood City. That's, that's a little bit different because we're not putting out a request for proposal for that area. If there's already a, a plan, they can talk to us and, and, and they can develop that and, and tell us why they're wanting to do what they do. And then they're going to have to come up with, if there's an impediment to that, if they, they have an ask of the city, then they have to lay that out for us. I don't know of that right now. So that shifts it away from being a priority to, are we just trying to, I mean, what's, what's the direction there? So I think that's kind of how I, I would view it. If, if there's a proposal there, let them, let the person who's making the proposal flush it out. And if they're asking for some type of assistance, what are they asking for? And if they're asking for some type of assistance, what are they asking for? Because they also have to be prepared. If it is a request for proposals, their plan may not be the plan when, if you get competing responses. So that's a risk that they would be looking at. But I don't know enough about it to say when we're, but I think those two things could go on simultaneously as opposed to two separate request for proposals.
Mr. Teeman.
I would merely, honorable Mayor Protem and my fellow council members, I would merely like to say that I concur with what has been said previously about moving forward. Also in chats I've had with constituents, particularly in our ward, there seems to be an overwhelming favorable opinion for moving forward with this. I don't think there's really any resistance to moving forward.
Well, Mr. Rose, you have your direction. So if there be nothing more, we will close the study session and open the council meeting in about a minute or so.